So Kelly sent an email earlier and I knew there was going to be some concern. Like you said, well, do you have a recommendation? And, you know, we, we have been spending a lot of time on this subject. As you can tell with the PowerPoint and the excels and everything we've put into this. So like with the water and sewer, you know, public works had a recommendation. If that's what you're suggesting, whatever I can do or we can do as staff to help you move this along, we're willing to do that. So including coming back, but, and we would have just as hard of time as you would to try to do that. But I'm happy to do that should you wish.
I think one of the things that I was looking at that I'd like to know is of the applicants, if any of them are, if it's not their, their first time applying, it'd be nice to know if when they applied in the past, did they come through with the deliverables and the final report? And I would be, and again, this is after the fact. So I know this is kind of a work in progress, but for the future, it would be nice to see their budget that shows their funding sources and, you know, their previous annual report and budget. I was looking at the municipal research center and it was defining gifting and looking at the definition of what's permitted as being necessary support for the poor and infirm. And so I think that's, that's kind of guiding my framework of how I approach these. Cause I, some of these applicants, you know, I've got a, I've got a soft spot for, but is it meeting the core need of the poor and the infirm as opposed to something that's, that's fun or nice to have? And when we knew we were probably going to be presented with more applications and greater, because the demand is going up all ever, all over the place. So that's what makes this difficult.
Thank you. When we were coming up with definitions for this program, we did have discussions around gifting of public funds. And the two definitions that we determined would fall outside of that category were human services or support to the poor and infirm and broad public benefit, which does include economic development and recreational activities. But it has to apply to the city as a whole and not serve one specific group or organization.
But you make a great point, Nicole, and that is not everybody is as good as others in submitting an annual report and then how, you know, addressing in an objective way their deliverables, achievements and whatnot. So.
Unfortunately, that has been the need for this cleanup is we were not getting reports from some of our entities or data. We have historically on some applications asked for other financial resources that they have, but not all of the applications. So any feedback I could present on those two points unfortunately would have holes.
Were the, I'm assuming that the reports were required just so that we would have them for auditing purposes in previous application cycles? Is that the case?
Unfortunately, they were not required until I took over the program last year.
Okay.
I think, anyway, I think the application says that they were supposed to do it. It wasn't followed through. It was one of those programs that wasn't nearly as organized or as tight as we now have it. So it was, it was like, did we ever receive that? And again.
It wasn't due to any staff fault. It was staff transitioning out and then it bouncing from staff to staff.
Previous administration and people changes.
I wonder if we can, because of the time crunch and the need for staff to move forward with preparing the budget and so on, if we can get in the, somewhere in the queue now that we agree, we, I think we already have agreed that we're going to allocate $207, $7,700 in the budget for municipal funding. And then work on a process that's more robust than this process to actually come up with how that's distributed based on the applications that have been made before the deadline. So we've got these, whatever the eight applications.
That would make Sue very happy. All she needs is a number. She doesn't care what, who, who to.
That's what I was thinking unless these entities are expecting an answer from us by September 1st or whatever the date would be. If they are, then it kind of would be, you know, sorry to disappoint you sort of a thing.
Yeah, they don't, they don't get the formal agreement from us until after council has finally adopted the budget. Until that point, it's just, it may happen, it may not, maybe this amount, it may not.
So am I correct that we've already actually made the decision that we would allocate 207? Or would we need to actually put that on the agenda?
We have put a funding cap of 1.5% of the general fund budget. That is a passed and approved decision from council. Sue estimates that amount for 2026 to be 207,700 or 207,700.
So that's, that's a step forward, you know, that would help Sue and help the budget. And then I guess you all could continue to dialogue like, well, then what do we do between now and, and then? To, to try to fine tune who gets or how to allocate that 207.
And with the budget process being where it's at, I feel compelled to say that 207, $207,700 is what we think the number is going to be right now. But that very well could change and it could go up, it could go down, it could do that. But, or, or maybe you have further insight from Sue?
Well, so she gets monthly projections, revenue projections from the county, from the state, from other sources of, of data that she, and that's how she puts her projections together. And it, and she knows she has to lock into, and so she gets about a half a year of data, which is June, and then annualizes that. And of course it's looking six months ahead. So you should, you just have to do the best you can at that point because she's got it and put it all into a budget book and get it to you. But it is based off of actual data for the first six months of this calendar year. You know, you know.
And the actual requests are closer to, I mean hypothetically closer to like more 4% of our annual. Because the, if I'm not mistaken, we've been 400 some, 400,000 something has been requested. But the 1.5% cap is landing at the 207. Right. That's what I thought.
So Harmony, if your question's well taken, which sort of underlines my thinking on this is no matter what we do today, if we were to arbitrarily come up with some numbers, they still mean, may need to be adjusted to meet the 1.5 cap. Until we know that. So I, anyway, I think. I'd like to see us move forward agreeing that we're going to do the 1.5, which we've already done. And then have some sort of conversation, whether it's another work session or we just all go away and figure it out this year and ask the staff to put together a more robust thing for next year that we can have that conversation later.
We can definitely do that. Technically, this does not need the actual amounts for each entity. Don't need to be finalized until council finalizes the budget, which generally happens December-ish, November-ish. As long as we, you know, have that approved amount for Sue, we can continue with the budget presentation in the fall.
I would like to know for sure if KSQM is requesting that amount for, like Vicki was saying, it looks like it was just this budget that they put together says funding for year 2025. So it looks like that, that they put in the spreadsheet is what they're requesting we do. And then who's, who knows what's going to happen the second year? Just want to make sure they understand that and they're not asking for 45,000 and 45,000.
I can absolutely go back to that entity and see clarification.
Cause that's such a large amount, it would make a difference.
And council can also adjust the term approval. So if they've requested that funding amount and it seems logical that that funding amount could be achieved in one year, council can say, we're going to deny the two-year request and give you one-year term.
And I also wonder in terms of just good communication, lavish communication with our constituencies, if we want to feed back to these applicants that, you know, obviously we appreciate the application. It's significantly oversubscribed on the resources that we have. We're going to be making some difficult decisions. And so if somebody's just waiting to hear and their whole program for 26 is dependent on our decision, they may know not to be that dependent on our decision.
Those entities that this is their second year in a two-year term, I have sent them an email stating that council makes all final budget determinations. So the amount that you received last year might necessarily be the amount you received this year. So, but as of the new applicants and applicants who've requested one-year terms, I have not communicated that. And I absolutely can, if that's what council would like.
So I, I agree with Christina that if we're going to come up with a scoring mechanism, that we should have sent it when they fill out the applications. So that begs the question, what are we going to do now? I guess is what I'm wondering.
Right. I was trying to think up, when's a good time to say, okay, well, we can do scoring later, right? And talk about things later, but that doesn't change that organizations have already applied. And I know it's scary, but we, I think we need to make decisions.
I would just like more time. We got this Thursday, I was on vacation and my son got married on Sunday. So I didn't really have time to go through and really read it. I would just like more time to go through and think about it.
I think what Dan has said is if you, I think Sue will just, this, this is a pre-conversation, right? Just to make the budget. So because if you, before you had that cap, it could have gone all over. And then all the numbers in the whole budget changed based on that. But knowing that we can lock that in for this program specifically, you certainly have time. This is just a work session. So we, you have time to do that.
Nicole, did you have a comment?
I think we, based on what you were saying, we have two definitions by which we can, you know, score, being the poor and the infirm and then broad human benefit. So how closely, you know, in reading the applications, how closely does it align with one or the other of those?
And I would just ask my fellow counselors to just be as objective as you can. So I feel less icky.
But I, I will absolutely put on future council agendas that we would like to determine a scoring criteria for the 2026 municipal funding program. So that that is discussion we can continue.
Thank you. And for the record, I think you've done a great job.
If you go back to that other spreadsheet, it does show the two different categories, I think, were broken out. This, this was a summary sheet.
It's in the funding, the historical.
That's the one, the historical. So the top one is everybody that historically, this is going back 10 years. Everybody that has received funds under the category of broad public benefit and everybody that has received under health and human services and the amount. So, you know, that's, yeah, this, this actual slide tells a lot or this spreadsheet tells a lot. You know, in 10 years, it was 5,000, 5,000, then it jumped to the 30s and 40s, but, but low. And then all of a sudden 21, of course, I'm sure that's COVID and whatnot. When the 75 came in for the collective SHSC. So then it, then we're into the ones and now then twos, now fours. This, this is, I found this really helpful between Sue and Maren helped put this together. It was a nice perspective.
And while you're thinking, I did have a clarifying question for the scoring criteria discussions. Do you want staff to present recommendations? Do you want to have a work session in which we have, say, grease team facilitating so that we can gather your ideas for the scoring recommendations? How would you like that to look?
That was also my question. I didn't know, like, would it save time if we bring back our ideas and look at them collectively? Would you prefer like a subcommittee type deal to bring suggestions forward? Or do you all just want to talk about it?
And we can, and we can call a lot of those same cities that Sue called to get to, you know, some were one, some were two, and you all went 1.5. And so we, you know, we could ask, see what other cities use. And then you could, as a starting place, beside your own, you know, thoughts on it too. But at least there'd be some, some to start with maybe.
Were you talking about this process this year where we didn't publish?
No, next year.
Scoring part, the scoring part, when we develop a like ranking type system, yes.
Not how we're going to do this this year.
Not this year. It's true. We're stuck. Yeah.
Okay. I totally agree. Be helpful.
And certainly we have some time for that, that, you know, that's going to be on start. We open it back up, the, the applications can, can be submitted from January to June. So we've got some time to work on that.
And I wouldn't mind another work session if we've got until December. Obviously I don't want to kick it that far down the road, but another work session that just gives us an opportunity to share with each other the criteria that we, we are working on as we're working toward and filling out these seven drafts sort of a thing. If this is what we're going to sort of stick around with, it'd be helpful to hear from each other. And I would want to be as transparent as possible on the basis on which I'm making decisions. So. And that could possibly inform the longer term process as well.
Can we try to lock that in so it doesn't get kicked down the road too far?
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's agenda planning. And we just, we just look at a, pick your meeting and drop it into a work session.
Okay.
I think the only other work session, we did, we, we did have a fairly busy spring with work sessions. You know, it was almost every meeting. But the only one left, I believe, is Representative Kilmer's replacement. It's, you have lined up, I believe, in September.
Yeah, I was going to bring it up during the public or open discussion. But yeah, we did get a councilwoman, Randall, to come on the 22nd, I believe it is, for a work session. So she'll be here.
We do have the, the August council date. Again, only one, one council meeting in August, we do have that available for a work session or the first session in September. I can plug potentially even both if we feel like we need it in.
I'd like the August 11th one personally.
Me too. I think should be sooner rather than later.
Agreed.
And that, that is to fill this out.
Well, we'll change that. Well, yeah, that would help if you had a, it's sub-criteria for next year's applicant, applicants or requests. Yeah. But yeah, but it's, I love what I heard. It might be some of the things you've mentioned, Nicole, like what is their request compared to their overall budget? You know, because they're really getting a little bit from us, but they have million dollar budgets or whatever. So anyway, and, and other things. So I'm eager to hear what you come up with as criteria. And we can call or start calling around, knowing that you have a work session coming to try to get, see what other cities are doing.
Well, my question would be, you know, if we're not determining who gets what tonight, I'm sure all of the entities that applied would be like, where are we at? So I'm, guess I'm kind of advocating on their behalf of like, what should we tell them? Should we tell them, well, we're going to develop a scoring system and then you can reapply? See? So that's why I'm like, I don't, I don't want to leave people hanging either.
Yeah, you're right. We're talking about next year's applicants. We still have this year's problem.
Yeah, I think at this point we should just do it this way.
Just bite, just bite the bullet. Rip off the.
I feel uncomfortable not knowing the, about the radio station request. And I just don't think we've got enough time to look at them and really ask all the questions we needed to ask and make sure we're making decisions with all the information that we need.
I didn't mean today, just, yeah.
Like this 2026 applicants sooner rather than later. Okay. So can we say, can we say the, let's determine the 2026 applicants on August 11th and then change the scoring work session to the first meeting in September?
Yes, we can. Just for clarification. So any decisions made during work session, you would need to bring forward into general business in a regular council session. And it would be, have to ask via motion for consent. So if we made decisions in work session tonight, we would still have an opportunity to review next council meeting, for instance, during the general discussion, if that offers any clarification. But yes, right now I have the August 11th meeting is reviewing the 2026 applications and determining the budget. And I have that first meeting in September as a work session to develop scoring criteria for 2026 program.
Should you and the mayor choose to schedule that in your agenda planning meeting? Yep.
Going forward from this moment here, are we all in agreement that Marin is going to contact the applicants and let them know about this budget situation? I'm not, I'm not going to try to word craft anything right here at the microphone. But are you, is that part of what I'm hearing, feeling from council this evening?
Call them about, about what? To let them know that we just haven't determined anything yet?
Or to, I'm wondering if it's appropriate for us to try and gather more information to help us with this decision.
Right.
And that would be perhaps what percentage of the municipal funding is their budget? Potentially. I, and that's just a suggestion if others have other ideas. But yeah. I wanted, I, that, this idea was brought up earlier and I wanted to bring it back up again because I'm trying to remember who said it, but it, it definitely, there was something there. That's, it feels like a really important step in this process for us to be able to move forward with this decision and for the applicants to understand or help us understand how this funding, what percentage of squims contribution to their organization is this, this bequest, as it were. Well, no, 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 I'm, I'm using that word incorrectly. This amount of money, how is that, how does this change?
Into their general budget?
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
I think I brought that up. And what I was going for more was wanting to look at their other revenue sources from donations, grants from other agencies, things like that. Because if we're the only one they've applied to, you know, what are they doing internally? For what amount is generated from fundraising from the public or memberships? And what amounts are coming in from other organizations to see that we're not the only ones that, you know, to make, have better understanding of their funding sources.
Right. And then if we're not going to be able to award this municipal funding request, then they need to be maybe very proactively looking for other funding opportunities as well.
I'm happy to reach out to applicants if that's the consensus of the council.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt.
So for clarification, you would like me to reach out to all applicants who have applied for 2026 funding and ask them to disclose what percentage of their request is in proportion to their overall budget?
Yes.
Okay.
We need four of you to.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of just interested in what their budget is. You know, if it's a copy of their last annual report or, because a lot of these entities, I went to the websites and there's no financials posted to give me an idea of.
Okay. Would you like, need to get both a copy of their overall budget? And then we can surmise what portion of their request is? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, that's two. Okay. I will reach out to the applicants and ask them for a copy of their overall budget.
And as part of that, I think, let them know that we budgeted this much. We got this much and we're still working on it. Was that also what you said, Dan?
Yeah. Yes.
I think we need to work that in. We need to communicate that.
I agree.
Okay.
But I guess along those lines, I'm also curious, because you have more experience in the nonprofit world. I was very curious, like, are they asking for so much because they think they'll get it? Or are they asking for so much because it's like, we're hoping for this much, but it's okay if we get this much? Does that make sense? Does it depend?
I think it depends on, yeah, the organization. I just, you know, I was looking at like, who actually completed the full application and submitted all of the documents that were requested. I think that's the first thing that you do for applications. I think that's what Kelly was talking about. So.
Okay. So to wrap up, I have four requests from council. I have a request to add a work session on August 11th to review the 2026 applications for municipal funding. I have a request to add a work session on the first meeting in September to discuss scoring criteria for the 2026 program. I have a request to reach out to KSQM to clarify the request on if they were meaning 109,000 for two years or if that was to be spread over two years. And I have a request to email all of our applicants and ask for a copy of their overall budget and to inform them that we received many more, a much higher request for funding than we have available for 2026 and that their budget requests will be a reflection of that.
Sounds great.
Wonderful.
Go ahead and toss in the number. Toss it in today. We're, we're looking at the, as a target.
207,700.
And we received requests for this amount in total from all, all requesters. I think that's important. I think that it, it, that, that if we put in that type of language in the, in the notification, that folks will understand that this is going to be, that the decision in front of us is not going to be an easy one. And yeah, that it helps, helped. I hope that with that kind of pre-communication, folks can adjust their expectations.
And we'll, we'll copy you all on that later.
Yeah, because as the spreadsheet that Matt sent over indicated, we do have to rectify almost a quarter of a million dollars, which is not a small number. So I'll make sure to add that point into the email and CC council.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, council.
All right. Nothing else, we'll reconvene at our normal scheduled time at 6 o'clock.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting in Squim City Council to order. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Justice for all.
All right, State Court, please take your call.
Counselor Kelly Berger.
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler.
Here.
Counselor Vicki Lowe.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
And Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
Any changes to the final agenda?
No, move to approve the agendas presented.
Second.
All right, moving second, anything further? Any opposed? I see, and then that motion will pass. All right, 5A, we have one ceremonial item this evening. It's going to be read by Counselor Rutter. This will be Olympic Peninsula Audubon Society proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's proclamation is titled Recognizing the Olympic Peninsula Audubon Society and Partners for Community Wildlife Habitat Designation by the National Wildlife Federation. Whereas throughout each year, more than 400 species of birds can be viewed on the North Olympic Peninsula, drawing bird-loving tourists from around the world, as well as a growing number of new residents seeking related lifestyles in spectacular environs. Whereas, conservation initiatives are needed to preserve the region's natural resources and the quality of life they offer. As such, bird conservation is central to the mission of the Olympic Peninsula Audubon Society located in Squim. And whereas, a 2019 study published in Science reported that the number of breeding birds in North America declined by nearly 30% or 3 billion birds since 1970. Declining bird populations and diversity of species warn us of impending environmental threats to all life locally and eventually to the planet as a whole. And whereas, birds require the same natural resources we humans do in order to survive: clean air, clean water, high-value food sources, emphasizing native plants. Where birds thrive, people can thrive also. And whereas, in September 2024, addressing the need for raised public awareness, the Olympic Peninsula Audubon Society launched an environmental initiative, the North Olympic Wildlife Habitat Project, in collaboration with the National Wildlife Federation and with the local support of the Dungeness River Nature Center and Wild Birds Unlimited. And whereas, since project launch, this collaboration has inspired individual property owners and managers across North Clallum and Jefferson Counties to participate in the National Wildlife Federation Certified Wildlife Habitat Program to transform outdoor spaces into habitats friendly to birds and other wildlife. And whereas, in May 2025, this Olympic Peninsula Audubon Society project achieved its initial objective, the National Wildlife Federation, I think I'm going, excuse me, I'm going to use NWF now and OPAS to refer to the two entities, excuse me. NWF, okay, so I'm going to start again from the top there. Whereas, in May 2025, this OPAS project achieved its initial objective, the NWF certification of the North Olympic Peninsula as a community wildlife habitat. This community status required NWF certification of a specified number of individual properties that support birds and other wildlife with necessary shelter, food, water, places to raise young, and sustainable gardening practices. And whereas, going forward, the project will facilitate educational programs to increase the number of certified properties across our area, expanding them into wildlife corridors, meaning neighborhoods with several certified properties that together provide safe passage for birds and other wildlife to travel between natural areas. And now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Brandon Janice for the City of Squim and the Squim City Council, hereby express our appreciation to the Olympic Peninsula Audubon Society Chapter and its project partners for their work to gain National Wildlife Federation recognition of the North Olympic Peninsula as a community wildlife habitat, and for their own ongoing commitment to increasing the number of certified properties in our area for the overall benefits to the environment and human health. Signed on this 28th day of July 2025 by our Mayor Brandon Janice. Thank you.
And I'd like to invite Ms. Coates up, does she'd like to say a few words?
She's very helpful. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Counselor Rutter in particular, for a full reading of that long proclamation. It's my honor as board member, publicity chair of the OPA, we say OPUS if that's allowed. And I'm along, I'm here with colleagues, our co-vice presidents of the chapter, on behalf of our full board, to thank you all and to thank the property owners and managers across Clallum and Jefferson Counties who are participating in this project. This acknowledgement helps us get the word out, bringing more and more participants to the project. And our core message is, when we invite nature to our outdoor spaces, private, public, small or large, we, as humans, are the beneficiaries. We've distributed our brochure and the National Wildlife Federation's checklist of essential elements to be certified as an individual property. We've enjoyed seeing that people that are brought to this checklist discover that often they need to just remove a little. discover that often they need to just remove a little something, or add a little something, and they really do have properties that are qualifying for certification. And every property we bring into this project helps us renew our certification, keep it alive as a community-recognized project, so we're grateful for that. The emphasis on, this checklist is on native plants, and refraining from chemicals for pesticides and herbicides, finding alternatives to those. Big news, at the Dungeness River Nature Center, on the first Saturday of September, 10:00 AM in the morning, we will have NWF representatives making a formal acknowledgement of their designation of the North Olympic Peninsula as a wildlife habitat. And of course, we would love city official recognition and presentation there at that celebration. And, lastly, we, as this is an ongoing project, we, as a chapter, are devoted to bringing our volunteer resources to the city in whatever way we may find projects of mutual interest. So, stay tuned. We'll be talking, and thank you again.
Thank you. Any comments from council? All right, go ahead, move on to public comment. Did you get the thing? Okay, all right, this is limited public forum. Individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. And this is not a forum for hate speech. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech. And speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. And any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. And the city of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind.
For individuals attending in person, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. In a moment, I will collect the public comment sign-in sheet. If you wish to comment and have not yet signed up, please do so now. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes, or 10 speakers, will be permitted for public comments. Please state your name if you are representing an organization and your city of residence. And no one has signed up for remote public comment. Our first speaker tonight is Christine Wilson.
Good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Christine Wilson. I'm a partner at Perkins Coie, and my law office is at Bellevue, Washington. We serve as counsel to John Wayne Enterprises and have been asked to speak on their behalf today. Ethan Wayne asked that I give you a short summation from a letter that he submitted today, as he was unable to come in person on short notice. So as I hope you all know by now, my client, John Wayne Enterprises, is the owner of 160 acres that is the expected site of a master-planned resort community next to John Wayne Marina. We expect you know this because John Wayne Enterprises has been working with the city of Squim and the Port of Port Angeles to reimagine the future for this site, adjacent to the Marina for decades now. Ethan Wayne also spoke to the city and the community widely last fall about Seabrook's plans for the West Bay Master Plan Community. So stepping back even further, the Wayne family has a long history in Squim. John Wayne purchased both the property that Seabrook is developing and the Marina property back in the 1970s. John gifted the Marina property to the Port of Port Angeles for a public Marina, which has been now a major public amenity since its completion by the port in 1983. John Wayne Enterprises built a community water system that serves that Marina and adjacent housing community, as well as their RV park, which it has operated for over 40 years. So I think it's fair to say that the Waynes have been a positive contributor to the Squim community for a long time now, providing amenities and drawing people to the community and supporting the local economy. John Wayne Enterprises has been talking with the city about resort development in this area for many years, and the city has been supportive. So with that history of working and planning together for many years, it isn't surprising that this site is already zoned for a planned resort community development, and your existing comprehensive plan also anticipates a master-planned resort being developed at this site. We understand that the moratorium vote that is before you tonight is not a vote on West Bay's project, and that your vote, one way or another, does not indicate the city's disapproval of that project, and we request that you make that clear in any action that you take tonight. Given that this master-plan community has been part of the city's expectations now for many years, we don't believe that solutions to these planning issues should wait on a full update to the city's comprehensive plan. In the weeks ahead, we ask that you please continue to look for another option. John Wayne Enterprises hopes to continue to work with the city of Squim, the Port of Port Angeles, and the community to realize this shared community vision for the Marina and these adjacent lands. Thank you.
If I could, I could ask everybody to please hold their applauses. Thank you.
Jeff Gunderson.
Hi, my name's Jeff Gunderson. I'm the CFO for Seabrook and representing the West Bay Project. So Seabrook was both surprised and deeply disappointed by the city of Squim's proposed emergency moratorium on the master-planned overlay applications, which had come after, you know, over 12 months of collaborative work in good faith with both the city staff and leadership. These efforts culminated in a submittal of well over 500 pages of materials, analysis, and reports in support of a land use application for a master plan consistent with this current city code and the vision and intent of the property's longtime owner of the John Wayne family. Seabrook has invested over $1 million in effort on this project. Our West Bay master plan proposal was intended to bring to fruition a vision for the development of that property that dates back to at least 2007 and is specifically referenced in the city's current comp plan. Throughout this process, Seabrook has operated with transparency, responsiveness, and a sheer desire to help shape a thoughtfully planned, sustainable neighborhood adjacent to the John Wayne Marina. Until we learned of the city's intent to impose the moratorium, we were unaware of any city concerns with respect to its comp plan and development regulations that would warrant such an action. In our view, the city's determination that a moratorium is needed at this point in the West Bay review process also sends an unfortunate message to those looking to invest in Squim's future. Seabrook only received its technical completeness review a week ago on July 21st and has already begun the work necessary to address the city's review comments when the moratorium was proposed. Despite the moratorium, Seabrook remains committed to the West Bay project, and we look forward to continuing to work with the city to find a path forwards and achieve a successful outcome for this project. Thank you.
Casey Roloff.
Hi there, I'm Casey Roloff. Address, do I have to put anything else? Do I have to, besides my name, anything else?
No.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. If you don't know about us, we are Seabrook Land Company. We built the little town of Seabrook down the coast. A lot of people considered it the middle of nowhere. It was about 10-plus years ago that the Wayne family actually reached out to us and thought that what we were doing there would be a perfect complement to Squim. And so when we came out and saw the site, we were really enamored by the site. We thought it was beautiful, the Marina, just Squim in general. And so we did see this opportunity to build a place that would be complementary to everything here in Squim, the main street, the natural environment, the Marina, and everything around that's great about Squim. We don't want to come in here and do our own thing. We want to fit in. We want to be a great neighbor. That's something that has been one of our values wherever we go. And just to kind of demonstrate that point, when we started Seabrook, we started a Seabrook Community Foundation. And we plan on also creating a community foundation here, and that foundation could support affordable housing or attainable housing in the area, schools. A lot of our money actually goes to college scholarships in our area. So we give hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, every, I should say hundreds of thousands of dollars each year. And the size of West Bay would probably generate over $4 million into a foundation that would support the local communities. But the best part about our foundation model is that it goes with every single home sale. So when we sell a property, a half a percent would go into the foundation. But when someone goes to sell their property down the road, a half a percent goes into that foundation. So it's a fully sustainable foundation. Also, if you don't know much about us, we specialize in building walkable communities. We want our neighbors to get to know each other, and we also want to be a place where it's inclusive, where everybody feels like they can walk in into West Bay, park their car, have a picnic on one of our picnic tables. They don't have to spend any money. People come from all over our county, all over the state, and enjoy Seabrook for the day, and they don't have to spend any money. So while it is a place that isn't an inexpensive place, it is a place where everybody feels welcome. And so we hope that this is a new community that Squim will embrace and will be a, you know, kind of a new addition to this great place. So appreciate, again, your time.
Rick Anderson.
Honorable councilors and Mr. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. I've lived on the peninsula for 45 years. We have a construction company. We build homes, named Anderson Homes. And I just wanted to point out the benefits to the city of Squim, the citizens of Squim with new home construction. You have not only all of the fees that the city collects right at the beginning, impact fees, general facility fees, building permit fees, that all goes to the city. And then you have, you build a new home, you have a tax base that contributes to many worthy endeavors in the city of Squim, Fire Department, School District, you know, the list goes on. All you got to do is look at your tax statement. And also, you have the people who are going to be working on these homes, building them, whether it be the plumber, the roofer, the framer, they're all live in the community. And that's a real, and they live here, they buy here. And so it contributes and builds up the community when a project like this goes forward. Also vendors, people that we buy materials from. They all pay into the sales tax here in the city of Squim. So the city of Squim is a major beneficiary. And I just kind of wanted to highlight that before you make your decision. Thank you.
Kelly Iyer.
I'm short.
I'm Kelly's Vanna.
Yes. My name is Kelly Erié. It's like Lake Erie, and then you make it Canadian, now you'll never forget it. I run, I'm the director for the Squim Lavender Festival. Thank you so much for the time that you've allowed us. I wanted to say we so appreciate you guys letting us use Cary Blake Park for another year. We had a fantastic festival. I'm so pleased that when I left the festival Sunday night, took Monday off to just die to the world, and then came back to the office on Tuesday. I had more emails in my inbox from guests, vendors, city staff, saying how fun the festival was, how great the community felt, how much enjoyment and joy there was on the premise. And we have a new world map, which has a little bit more information from where people came from all over the world. You can see down at the very bottom, they came from literally almost every continent, at least every continent that could fit on this diagram. And then they stayed, you know, more than three nights, both locally and abroad. I had emails coming from Willamette, from Sequoia, California even, of people saying how much fun they had. And then the raffle was won by a woman from Utah. So we had just, you know, all over the world came to the festival. It was super fun. Thank you again for that. We were just showing off our little latest new design, and we look forward to working with you guys next year.
Annie Hogan Boom.
Hi, I'm Annie Hogan Boom. I was here two weeks ago. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate my message of a couple of weeks ago. I am a trafficking survivor and a recovered addict, and I run a support group out of the ramen shop on Monday evenings. They're going on right now, and I will be going to them in a minute, in a minute. But just wanted to repeat, two weeks ago, I brought two of our women with us, and we made a plea to post the Seal Street Park as no camping and no drug use. And we've been having, our women feel extreme, I personally feel threatened, and I know a lot of the guys who live down there. But we feel threatened by the folks that gather down there, and they have great parties, often when we're having our meetings. Just last Monday, they were smoking joints jubilantly right outside the shop. And I could only surmise that perhaps they knew something I didn't know yet, but that our request was probably not going to bear any fruit, and that they, in fact, have more rights to downtown Squim than vulnerable women. So if I sound a little upset, I don't really mean to, because I don't, I do understand the legal ramifications. I was homeless myself, although we didn't have all the benefits that they have when I was homeless. And I just want you to really think about, are we actually helping people when we enable them to engage in a destructive lifestyle, where drug use is easy, and where they have a lovely living room at the citizen's expense? It's difficult for me as a mother, and as a, I wouldn't allow my daughter to come downtown Squim. And many of my friends no longer allow their children. But that's beside the point. What I'm asking right now is simply for safety and the perception of safety, because my girls will not come down here, even if there's not the perception of safety. And I'm going to have to move my group to a much less convenient spot. So just making another plea to find a way to do, to post it, and to allow us to remain in downtown Squim. Thank you.
Randy Steinman.
My name's Randy Steinman. I'm from Port Angeles. And I just want to talk to you a little bit about, I went down Pacific Beach camping this last April. And I knew about the whole Seabrook thing going on, coming in here. And so I went up to Seabrook, and I did a little bit of research to find a little bit more about, you know, who they are, what they do and everything, and talked to business owners, talked to some people that worked there, and administration, everything. And the common thread was that they talked about the owner with the passion he has, the vision he has, community-minded. They talked about, I found out about the, you know, the foundation they run, the scholarships they give, that they're building a community school, how they give back to the community. Oh, this doesn't go to his head, but somebody even called him a genius. Oh, this doesn't go to his head, but somebody even called him a genius, the stuff he does. And I feel like Squim kind of won the lottery, that they actually get the opportunity to have a business come in here, like Seabrook, that's going to give back to the community. They're not somebody that just comes in and throws up buildings and leaves. They find the best builders here in Squim. They let all the local people do the work. Obviously, Anderson Homes is here, one of the best builders on the peninsula. So they come in here, they're going to do everything right. They're going to make Squim, they're just going to enhance everything in Squim, the community. And I just think that it's a great opportunity for Squim, and I'd hate to see, you know, this one get lost. Thank you.
Lisa Roberts.
Good evening, councilors and honorable mayor. Before I dive in why we're so passionate about the Seabrook project, I want to share a bit about my, our family's roots. My husband's family has been a part of this region for generations. His mother's side, when Ephraim Hunter arrived in 1895, coming around the Horn or South Africa to come to this area. And his father's side journeyed here in a Conestoga wagon in the 1860s. We're deeply rooted in this community. As local business owners right here in Squim, we're genuinely enthusiastic about the West Bay Seabrook project at the John Wayne Marina. From where we stand, as folks deeply invest in our community's well being, this development isn't just another proposal. It's a real chance for growth. Think about it, a significant boost to our tax base. That's not just numbers on a page. It's more resources for our schools, better roads, and the kind of local services that truly enhance our daily lives. And jobs, we're talking about putting our neighbors, local contractors, and skilled tradespeople to work right here in Squim. That's a powerful ripple effect we can all appreciate, including their foundation and their school. Beyond the immediate economic benefits, imagine the vibrancy this project will bring. A wider variety of restaurants and charming small businesses will open the door, giving us all more choices, and that you see on Nextdoor constantly, people asking for. It's also about thoughtfully addressing the needs of our crucial tourism industry by providing much needed housing for visitors. And after all, a thriving tourism sector directly benefits every business in this town. We know there have been whispers of concern, particularly around water resources. But let's remember, a city's assessment indicates water isn't an issue for this development. We trust their diligence in these matters, as we trust the administrators, bureaucrats, and the people who serve Squim. And let's not forget the zoning for this land that's been consistent for two decades. It would be a shame if they were the only one excluded when others have gone through. That's a long time for a plan to be in place, and it speaks well for a well considered vision. We've also noticed the online petition, and it's interesting to see a good portion of the signatures aren't even from these area codes. So while there's certainly a broader interest, the sentiment on the ground right here in Squim might be a little bit different. We've experienced Seabrook firsthand. It's quite impressive, the quality, the vision, the community feel. We've also had the opportunity to attend meetings with Casey Roloff and his plans for the John Wayne, and they're truly inspiring. He's not just building houses, he's building community. If this project doesn't happen, this land will still be developed by someone else. But will their vision be as generous for our community? Will it create as many jobs? Will it bring the same level of thoughtfulness to our town? We believe Mr. Roloff's approach is unique, and we're genuinely excited about this project. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you, everybody that spoke this evening. All right. Item eight consent agenda.
Items on tonight's consent agenda, claim vouchers totaling $412,612.31, city council meeting minutes from July 14, 2025, Axon Enterprise Inc. TASER agreement, cross sound consulting contract amendment, and revision to city council rules of procedure, Article 1.5, a resolution.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Moved and seconded. Anything further? Any opposed? I see. And then that motion will pass. All right. Moving on to 9A, this will be emergency moratorium on master planned overlay applications. And since this is a general business item, and not a public hearing, there won't be any public comment period or public staff Q and A, although there will be a public hearing on this matter within the next 60 calendar days. For public comments, I will go ahead and turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Purposes of the record, Christina Nelson Gross. Before I start to identify what this agenda item is about to council, I would first like to take the opportunity to identify what this item is not. This item, as requested by the Wayne family's comment, this item is not about the West Bay application. This item is not about the merits approval or disapproval of that application. This item is not a a statement or opinion on the merits of the project whatsoever. Right? That is not the purpose of this. This item, agenda item is about having an emergency ordinance. This agenda item is about the city's responsibility to have clear and consistent guidance through its comprehensive plan and through its municipal codes to walk through the approval processes. The city also uses this as a tool for when there may be issues that arise that causes concerns that may interfere with those clear and consistent guidance. So while I understand that this has been a, in the works for many years, that is not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is to give a pause to city staff for us to reevaluate the multiple moving parts that are occurring as a result of our comprehensive plan update, and to ensure that we are following the processes needed to provide the opportunity for West Bay's application to be in its, in the best position possible to move forward through the approval process. We also have an obligation, and this is also a pause, to, again, ensure that we have clear and consistent codes and processes. And that as part of the new comprehensive plan evaluation, we need to look at our existing and future infrastructure to make sure that we have that as clear as possible as well, again, to guide the West Bay project for their needs. There's certain city responsibilities that we have to do, and there's certain development applicant responsibilities that needs to be done. So with all of that, again, this is a pause for staff to review our internal processes and procedures as outlined in our comprehensive plan and our Squim municipal code. And it is not something that is a reflection on the application whatsoever. As a matter of fact, staff anticipate and would encourage West Bay to reach out to city staff even during the moratorium process, to talk about the types of things that were addressed in their technically incomplete letter. Those types of things can still be done through a moratorium process. It does not mean everything comes to a halt. Staff also would, let me see, are also in the process of exploring alternatives to this moratorium process. But again, because of the nature of the way the situation that prompted this moratorium developed, we cannot fully assess that at this time. And we need the time and the ability to look at our internal procedures and our guiding documents to see what the best path forward is. And I will share that the city has already been engaging in conversation with West Bay's legal counsel and the Wayne family's legal counsel to talk about different ways forward. We are committed to continuing that to the extent possible. And finally, the last thing that I would say is that there seems to be, again, some conception or some perception about that the city staff are looking to change the concepts behind the planned resort community. That is not what we are anticipating either. Again, the concepts, staff have no ability to change. Council may, if they so choose, but that is not staff's intention in bringing this forward. We intend to bring this forward to have the clearest, most defensible path for the city, for the applicant, and frankly, for the residents as well. So that is the purpose of this emergency moratorium before you. I don't believe I have anything else to add beyond that this would be a majority plus one vote, meaning five councilors would need to pass this moratorium. I am happy to answer any questions council may have.
Hi, I have two questions. This just pertains to significant scale master plan. This doesn't have any effect on smaller developments.
No, and that is correct, right? That is one of the issues is that the master plan is something that is of a dramatically different scale in most instances.
Okay.
And this, oh, no, and I just, go ahead, and I.
If staff is able to complete the updates prior to six months, can we rescind the moratorium?
I, what I'm going to say, and I'm going to look at Carla at this, I think that depends. We need to be able to evaluate what the potential fixes may be. So, so no, when I answer that, it's with that caveat. If staff think that we have a viable alternative to a continued moratorium, we would absolutely bring that forward to the council. Doing a moratorium is not something that staff take lightly. You know, in my nearly 10 years in this role, this would only be the third moratorium that I am aware of. And the first one was one that I walked into when I first came into this role. This is not my preferred course of action for a variety of reasons. And the city manager also wanted me to mention that our outside legal counsel also recommended a moratorium for, to resolve these, these issues.
So thank you, sort of piggybacking on that question or following up. The master plan overlay is of significant size and so on. Is there a criteria for that? Are there other potential projects, things that we're aware of that could be impacted by this moratorium besides the focus on West Bay?
There have been some discussion. I know the planning staff have had some preliminary discussions with other master plan potential applicants. We've not seen another application at this point. The unfortunate reality is that, you know, it was one of those things that until staff had an application in front of it and started digging into various matters, that we discovered the issue that is, that, that has prompted staff to look to the moratorium as a tool to remedy that.
So at one level, it is coincidental. At another level, it's kind of a causation thing, too.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Yeah. But but that would, but I would say that would be the only relationship to this application, right? It could be a master plan on an entirely different thing, but we would still be running into these.
I do appreciate your emphasizing what this is not about. That's good. And for the council, for the Wayne family to acknowledge that that's, the Wayne family is aware that that's not what we're trying to decide now. So I appreciate that for clarity. Then can you also help me understand, and it just shows my ignorance, that there's no public hearing required, and yet there's a public hearing within 60 days? I'm trying to sort
State law, yeah. State law looks at moratoriums as a tool for exactly these types of situations where we can enter into a moratorium to allow the city some, some protection, and to review things that could result in liability, that could result in inconsistencies with various land use applications. And for an emergency ordinance, there is no public hearing tonight. But we do have a public hearing that the mayor had mentioned that we need to have within 60 days. That public hearing is intended for council to hear what the concerns are, or support, or against, or whatever the case may be, on the moratorium. It also is something that enables staff to have some time to look more closely at the issue. Occasionally, it can be used where the moratorium period, and sometimes information gleaned through the public hearing process, sometimes that enables staff to come forward and say, okay, we think we may have a path forward through development of some internal controls. That may not be an option here because of the type of situation that we're running into. But the point is, is that the the public hearing can can also provide additional information. And council has the ability to modify limit or do nothing and let the moratorium stand. But if they wanted to, on the public hearing, they could.
Thank you for the last bit of that, because it sounded like we were saying, we have to have a public hearing, but it really won't matter. And that's not what you're saying.
No, no, that is.
That'd inform a different solution that might be to everybody's benefit.
And and that that entirely depends on the results that we find, and what other information may glean from that public process. But it is possible.
Yeah. And finally, I just want to use my time to just say thanks for all the work you've done on this and the council that you've sought internally, as well as externally. This protection of the city is an important part of our duty. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. And I have a, have to give a shout out to my partner over here, Carla Bouton, our planning consultant. She's been instrumental in this as well.
Any other questions? If not, there's a motion.
I move to adopt the proposed emergency ordinance establishing a moratorium on applications for master planned overlays. I further move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing in the regular manner to be held within the 60 day, 60 calendar days as required by statute.
Second. All right. Moving second is, anything further? All right. We need a majority plus one. So can we take a roll call?
Counselor Berger.
Yes.
Counselor Butler.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Janice. Counselor Rutter.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Yes.
Motion passed 7-0. Thank you, council.
All right. Moving on to item 11, no youth liaisons this evening. So city manager.
Excuse me, that came faster than I anticipated. Always nice to meet with you, council. I guess I wanted to just point out that you all received an email from Chief Hill on extensive investigative work relative to public comment. So he's here tonight, if you choose to have any more in, you know, dialogue with that. But I was really pleased with all the effort they put into trying to get close to the roots of that and to continue to manage that issue. We take it very seriously. And you all asked me to do that, and that has been passed on. So thank you for that, and thank the RPD for that. So at any time, let me know, because Chief Hill's here. I'll quickly just highlight a couple of things that have occurred. I had a nice meeting with Reagan Nichols, superintendent of the school district. Besides talking me through the timelines for bonding and building and all of those things, she did mention that, asked me to bring back a message, and we'll solve this in agenda planning. But they, their school board found it very helpful and collaborative to have met with you all like, like they did. And so they're, we'll talk about that later. But they're looking for maybe another fall session like that, where you could share your priorities, or we'll work on the agenda. But they, they, they asked for that, and that was a real positive thing for them. And, and so Reagan shared that with me. I, you've already heard about the lavender weekend. We don't have all the data on that, but we hear the numbers are as strong as they've been in the past, if not stronger. So, you know, kudos to the organizers of that. organizers of that. Lots of departmental support goes into that with parks and police and, and whatnot. Want to thank counsel for making time for Leland Consulting. As you know, they were here for two days as part of the comp plan process, public input and, and getting engagement from community leaders. So they met with a number of various community stakeholders. So that was a two day process and they, they found that very useful. So thank you for that. Sue wanted me to let you know that we are closer every week to a budget that hopefully will be able to go to rent or, you know, she's got a new electronic budget book to share with you this year, a little different format, but same essence. And we started $500,000 off because every department submits a budget specific to their department. And it's not until we aggregate all that and we look at our projected revenues and then we look at all, how people want to spend it, that we have to say, sorry, we got to trim, you know, this back. And so we've been meeting with all of the departments. We have one left and we're under 200,000 at this point. And so we think we'll get there and be able to move forward. So I really want to thank the department directors for letting us work with them and do the necessary conservative trimming that was essential to present a balanced budget to you. I could go a little quicker, I suppose. We're at 71% completion on our annual Gallup survey. And we, you know, we, we do that every year with our employees. They're interested in what they have to say about what we can do better. And so we're at 71% of completion of that. I think I'll just, probably the last thing, it comes from Public Works. Many of you may have heard from your constituents, we've got four very active construction projects underway around town from Pre Street to the ADA ramp, curb replacements, Washington and Brown, et cetera, et cetera. So this is our biggest year, I think, in the history of the city relative to construction. So it's busy summertime and apologize to residents for the, any inconvenience that that brings on. We put out a press release about the Public Works pulling back from the, what's it called? The oil, the waste oil deposit that they had a place down at the shop that they used to take that in. But for a lot of reasons, we were going to have to pull that back. So we put a press release out on that this past week. I think that's it. We're getting an ADA about a year ago. You remember that we hired a consultant group to do an ADA assessment? It was required if we ever expected to ask for federal grants or whatnot, but we did it on our streets and sidewalks. Now we're doing it on our parks and our facilities. And so that will help us again, apply for more grants and to bring our city into, into compliance there. So that's probably the highlights. So any, any questions? Everybody's busy. Thank you very much.
We just, thanks, Matt, again, for the report on the, the need to step back from the waste oil disposal. Certainly understand, appreciate that. Will this, is it possible for the city to do any advice? And I've not seen the announcement, so maybe it's included to the public on alternatives for.
There are, I think there's some alternative solutions in town, and that's the signage they're making for there. So with between the, the press release and the signage and they're, they're doing, they're implementing this change over six weeks so that people have a time to just make another connection to the other resources in town. So.
Good. Thank you.
I think it's her. Committee reports.
Hello. Last week, the Squim Parks, Arbor and Rec Board finished reviewing the parks and open spaces chapter of the, of the comp plan. I may have forgotten one of the chapters, but I'm just speaking off memory here. But they are done with their comp plan review for the Parks, Arbor, Rec Board of the relevant chapters to their board. Today, the Squim Arts Commission completed their review of the pertinent chapter for the, it was the community character. And so that's moving forward. Otherwise, business as usual for the Squim Parb and the Squim Arts Commission. Thank you. Oh, and they, they also were looking at the art for the next exhibit. It's Northwest Elements is going to be very interesting. I'll tell you that.
Anyone else? Anything for open discussion? Do you have time, Dan? Oh, no. I was gonna say it's about the Congresswoman Randall, but we got to that earlier. So if anybody has any, there's no agenda yet for that meeting other than what we sent to our representatives at that level. So if anybody has any specific things they would like to bring up other than that, just shoot me an email. So. All right. Other than that, anybody besides myself and Rachel like to attend August 5? If you choose to do so, just let Heather know. Otherwise, August 11th at 5:00 PM will be our next meeting. And because Rachel got after me last time. It's that time of the hour.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Are there any objections? All right. That motion will pass. Have a good night.